Official Council meeting order, seven twenty-eight. The rise will be flagrantly.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united in the freedom of liberty and justice for all.
Discussion on the consent agenda. We are looking to remove the medical marijuana discussion from all business. Allow anybody who's left just to come up here in regular public comment. Objections to that? Okay. Look for a motion to approve the consent agenda with those changes.
So moved.
I'll support.
Further discussion. Sue.
Councilmember Canfield.
Yes.
Mayor DeBoer.
Yes.
Councilmember Salzweedl.
Yes.
Councilmember Phillips.
Yes.
Councilmember Chambers.
Yes.
Now we will move to citizen comment for items not needed. We have one that you can go ahead and move. Yep.
Good evening. My name is Philip Hesch. I live at nine three one North Monroe. I've lived in the city of Lowell for over fifteen years now. I've worked as a law enforcement officer for over twelve years now. I missed the earlier planning discussion. I'm sorry I was still at work. Basically, my purpose in coming before the council is to echo the same sentiments that you're going to hear from your chief of police and all the law enforcement officers here in the city. The medical marijuana sounds like this golden ticket to take care of all the problems and all the ills the city suffers, and literally nothing could be further from the truth. Now, I won't sit here and tell you that you can't vote for this because it's your choice. What I will tell you is that you need to do some serious research and look at what happens in other parts of the country that these laws have passed. Now, these special interest groups are going to come in, and they're going to give you all these ten-dollar words, and they're going to have a whole bunch of fancy terminology of all the things they're going to do to help the city of Lowell: biometric security, revenue sharing, cost sharing, patient access. All these different things sound really good when you take them out of context, but what they don't tell you about is the problems that come with it. The bottom line is, this drug is still illegal at the federal level. So anything the city of Lowell invests into bringing this type of infrastructure in could at any time immediately be quashed by the federal government, without question. At the same time, the idea that there's going to be bales of money that are going to be coming in to help out and fill those coffers is an illusion. The only bales of money you're going to find are the warehouses full of cash, like they deal with in the state of Colorado, because they cannot put that money in a bank, because the federal banks will not accept drug money. Regardless of what its origin is, they simply won't accept it, and anything you're dealing with essentially hasn't been hammered out, but could be considered taking profits from a federally legal substance, and that could put the city in a real bind. Not to mention the problems that you have just having a massive cash crop like that within your city or within our city boundaries. I can't tell you the number of times that we've seen, just over the last couple of years, just in my own neighboring county where I work, drug dealers that are being ripped off, robberies, firearms involved, tensions are high, people are getting injured, property's being damaged. We have a nice community here, and we have absolutely no need to bring that element into this city. Again, these special interest groups, people who have nothing to do with the city of Lowell, are essentially trying to use you as a starting point to fill their own pockets. They're planning on the fact that you guys are going to look at it and want to do something to balance your budget, and really all they're doing is filling their pockets. Now, the only great thing that they did right when they wrote this law, you don't have to do anything. That's the beauty of it. You don't have to say no, or you don't have to say yes. By taking no action at all, you can shoot it down without ever having to decide one way or the other. You have to actually make the choice of what it is you want to do, yes or no, or just let it ride. Well, it's a heck of a lot easier just to let things stay the way they are than it is to have to gerrymann down that road and figure out how you're going to regulate this industry that quite frankly has no regulations right now, and they're all going to be in process. So again, I just cannot urge you enough to not allow this into the city of Lowell. We have no need for it. There's going to be absolutely no benefit, and there's going to be a ton of additional costs that aren't even considered. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Cliff, yep, sorry.
Totally unrelated to marijuana in any way, shape, or form. Another happy subject I think we're not so divided on is the need for some way for people to cross Main Street in a safe manner on a daily basis. We just had Christmas through Lowell. I've had my store for fifteen years. We've been jumping up and down for fifteen years, and I know there's probably people here that are going to say, "Oh, we were talking about it before you got here, Cliff." Yeah, that's true. When are we going to do something about it, gentlemen? My latest little effort was I urged people to call when all the hubbub happened on Facebook over the past couple of weeks, and then TV eight made it look like, "Hey, come on out to Lowell. Good luck cars in the street." I encouraged everybody to call Senator Hilton Brand because he's been doing an outstanding job on behalf of Lowell lately, and I said, "Hey, let's thank him for what he's doing and see if he can get us a way to get people across the street." As I mentioned, we just had Christmas through Lowell. Anybody that was here Saturday, Friday, it was nuts. I walked down to Lowell Light Power to put my bill in the box in the evening, and I watched three kids run across the street down kind of by your store, and their parents were freaking out, and they made it safely, but it almost seems like we're going to have to have somebody get hit, injured, killed, whatever, before we get something done. I hope we don't have to do that. I called Hilton Brand today, talked to a guy named Adam. He said the senator is on it. He's been monitoring the hubbub. They contacted someone at MDOT at the Grand Rapids office. What's it called? The Grand Region Office. They gave me a phone number, so I called there. I'm encouraging my friends to call there, too. The story I got was that they were going to reach out to the city of Lowell, so if they do, I would encourage you guys to do whatever we can to get some kind of a lit, safe way for people to cross the street. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Cliff. Anybody else? Good.
Hi, I'm Kathleen Graham. I'm a certified hospice palliative care registered nurse. I was involved with -- sorry, I live in Grand Rapids. I was involved with the legislature when they developed this new law. I was thrown into it when it became legal in two thousand and eight, and the people that I took care of under hospice care started telling us that they use this medicine. So as a nurse, I became educated about what this medicine does to a patient, how it interacts with the medications we give to them, and I found that it is not completely safe, that there are drug-to-drug interactions, and that's where it is important for medical professionals to become educated about what this does to a patient. It does make medications forty percent, up to forty percent, more effective, and that is especially important when mixed with Dacoco because it can cause liver toxicity if we don't know that they're taking cannabis and we don't alter the medication. In working with our state officials with this and gathering the information and knowledge that I have, I have also developed a training program. I am partnering with the people that want to own and operate these stores in order to train their patient consultants that have direct patient access, and that they need to have some type of knowledge, and that knowledge also includes when to contact a medical professional, when is this outside my scope of practice. And that is what I also do. I take on complicated patients that have polypharmacy or multiple disease processes. I spent time this summer at St. Mary's Hospital and taught the hospice and palliative care doctors there so that they can have some type of knowledge about how to keep our patients safe. I also am working with Connor in order to develop that training for his staff, should you guys allow him to open here. That also does include HIPAA and confidentiality laws in the state of Michigan, so I did want to reassure you that this is more than just a routine store. What I'm also doing is working with the legislature to develop a law similar to what it does for alcohol. You have to have a minimum training educational level in order to sell alcohol in this city. I also believe that that should be done with cannabis. And if you pay attention to any of the meetings, the last Law Board meeting, Don Bailey also agrees with that, and he made announcement of that, so I have every indication that there will eventually be a minimum education level for threat patient staff that sell this. And I encourage you, it is here currently in your community. It's whether or not you want it regulated and whether you want it out safe where the police have access to go investigate it and have data. Just thank you for your time in investigating this. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else for public comment? Yep.
Hello, my name's Don Lackler. I'm a Lowell resident. I'm also a current car holder. I do partake in marijuana in the evenings. I suffer from sciatica. Two years ago, I was going to be pretty much done playing softball. I do construction work. I couldn't get up and function for work. I took a month and a half off of the bump, which is our big push, most hours being worked because I couldn't move. I went to the doctor. They basically had a choice between taking Norco or going under the knife for surgery, both were scary to me, seek other options. Within about two months, I was actually able to walk and function without an issue. My hip, like, basically, it feels like it's half out of the socket. So when I go to walk, I feel like I'm in the temple. I smoke at night. Before I go to bed, I wake up in the morning fine. I work every day. I don't have issues with it. I'm back to playing softball. I mean, are there side effects to it? I'm not really sure. I haven't had any. I haven't lost my job. I get up every day going to work. I have no lack of ambition, but I also don't set smoke all day long. You can misuse any drug. I mean, prescription drugs are given. I mean, how many people die every year from, you know, Norcos or Whitey then or this or that? I mean, misuse of any drug is not good, but use in moderation, there's a lot less side effects of marijuana. As far as I know, there's still zero proven deaths from marijuana use. I mean, that's pretty much what I have to say about it. I assume someplace safe to get their medicine so they don't have to go to your local guy that, "Well, you know, I don't have any marijuana, but I have this, this, I'll take care of your thing." If the wrong person gets told that, they grab something that's not, I mean, that's part more helpful to them. You know, it gives them a safe place to go without everything else getting pushed down their throats. Just, you know, take into consideration. Thank you.
Thank you. Let's go. All right. Now, close that. Nothing in old business but the changes, new business. Number A, showboat committee council request.
Well, good evening. We have an update on the showboat. Liz and Lou, Lou D'Agostino and Ms. Baker, excuse me, are here to talk about progress on the showboat and to bring a few requests to council. Liz and Lou.
Hi. Hello, Lou. I'm D'Agostino, your mid-chairperson for the rebuilding of the showboat, and I'm here to just give you guys an update. I think you have in your pamphlet these same drawings that I have behind me, and maybe a little bit of other information that we've been working on diligently approximately since January or so. But I'm also here to request a few things from you people. As a committee, we've been meeting, like I said, since January. We want to present to you and recommend to you that you name the boat, name the boat, the Lowell Showboat. That's our recommendation. And secondly, we also would like you to donate the Robert E. Lee sign that was taken down from the boat to the museum. The museum is waiting for it, open arms, if you guys give it your blessing, and move that to the museum so it can be looked back many generations down the road, remembered where it was, what it was all about. And the third thing was, we're planning on reusing some of the boat, specifically, if it all works out, we're planning on using the paddle wheel and maybe some of the smoke stacks, one or two of the smoke stacks, and a few other items, and we're asking you if this is all right with you guys, since you guys are the owner of the boat, the city of Lowell. And last but not least, there is two other things. Excuse me. We want to, what we want to do, I've been approached, and some of the other people on the committee have been approached over the last four or five months, people would like to know what we're doing with the boat, how we're going to salvage it, and what we have come up with as far as a committee is, we'd like to auction off, not really a formal auction, we don't know how we're going to do it, but we'd like to auction off some of the boards or parts of the boat just to raise money towards the building of the new boat. I think that would go over well on the community. That's another question we'd like you guys to give us an answer to. And then we're also looking at incorporating the old DPW building and the old head-in building. For people that aren't aware of that, it's the buildings that are along Riverside where the Chambers sits, and there's two buildings there. We want to incorporate that into this rebuilding of the showboat to make it all flow together. I guess we're asking you, do you guys, you have those questions, which are nothings? Obviously, nothings in concrete, you know. As a committee, what we're doing is we came up with some ideas, and everybody here can look at these ideas after the meeting's over, me and myself, and Mark Montz on the committee will be willing to answer any questions that you have, and any questions that you people may have for us, how we came up with this, and things like that. It's moving forward. It's getting closer, and for people that aren't aware of it, too, the money that was given to the city was given to the city, so the city is basically now in charge of building the showboat, but they have a time restraint on it. The money has to be paid, all money has to be spent by October, and the money that is not spent by October goes back to the state. So the committee and the city are working hand in hand to try and keep this thing rolling so we can spend all that money. And we have not, and the city has not found a contractor yet, so we really don't know any real numbers, but we think a million dollars is going to do quite a bit. But as a committee, our goal, when we first started this, if you remember, was to give at least one point five million, and that still is our goal. So the committee is going to start working once we get the okay from the city and the contractor that these plans will work, then we're going to start our fundraising portion of this. Basically, that's all I have. I want to see if you guys have some questions for me, Liz, or Mark.
Who, besides the million dollars you got, how much have you raised so far?
Well, the Aurora has raised approximately, and help me here, Mark, I think it's a hundred and thirty thousand dollars, and Liz, through other fundraisers, Larkens, Kevlar Chili Cook-Off, and there's been a few other fundraisers. We have about nine thousand, ten thousand, so we have about a hundred and forty thousand additional to the million dollars at this time right now.
Thank you.
Yep. Would you support it?
I'm supportive of all the recommendations. Do you want to go through them one by one, or do you want to accept them as a whole?
I think we can accept them as all. There's no objections.
If you have individual questions, I need to the recommendations, we can go through them, or Lou can add to them if you have questions. One question, Lou. What disposal of the old boat? Do, I mean, is there a price figured in for that?
That is all going, that's all being worked out by the city and the general contractor. I guess that's going to be in their contract. That's going to be part of it, and I guess if he does, declines to do that, then the city will reach out to somebody else to dispose of the boat.
I think consensus over here, Liz keeps us moving forward. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Support motion for those.
So moved. I'll second.
Sue.
Mayor DeBoer.
Yes.
Councilmember Salzweedl.
Yes.
Councilmember Phillips.
Yes.
Councilmember Chambers.
Yes.
And Councilmember Canfield.
Yes.
Item B, software developer Michael.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council. When I attended the ICMA conference in San Antonio a few weeks ago, I participated in a demo from Unitrix LLC on their financial forecasting software program. Unitrix is a well-known company servicing Michigan municipalities based out of Auburn Hills. Unitrix is able to create financial forecasting models for the city based on all the information we send to the state and information we have in VSNA for our budget. Many of these forecast models created can be placed on the city website and viewed by residents and others who utilize the city website. In addition, Unitrix is able to help us utilize current financial crime, act fifty-one accident information provided to the state of Michigan to better forecast operational and financial needs for municipalities. This will allow us to automatically create the necessary CVTRS reports we need to file with the Department of Treasury in order to get our revenue sharing and our required dashboard information as well. Sue Owen and I had a lengthier demo when I returned from San Antonio, and we believe this will be able to help us, especially in the five-year planning of our finances. There are also tools available that will help manage our capital improvement projects and building maintenance issues. VSNA currently doesn't provide these tools for us. To enter into agreement with Unitrix, this would be an annual subscription service. If the city enters into a contract with Unitrix prior to December first, two thousand and eighteen, we will be reimbursed fifty percent of our costs by the state of Michigan as they are encouraging municipalities statewide to pay greater attention to financial forecasting methods. Unitrix provided two different packages to purchase. One would be the basic package, which is three thousand one hundred and seventy, one hundred and seven dollars and twenty cents, and the second package, which allows for more of the specialty-based services Unitrix provides. That cost is four thousand six hundred and sixty-one dollars and thirty cents. This was not a budgeted item. However, funds are available in the city of Lowell Professional Services line item for this package. If the city were to purchase this, I would recommend purchasing the premium option, as I suspect we will be able to utilize many of these programs to help us with internal management practices. After researching this product, I believe this will be a highly beneficial tool for city administration to utilize. The state of Michigan has reimbursed municipalities who have subscribed to the service from Unitrix and is the only financial forecasting software the state will reimburse municipalities for purchasing. They have done this for two years prior, and Unitrix believes this reimbursement will continue for some time as more municipalities take advantage of this. I recommend that the city enter into an agreement with Unitrix LLC for their financial forecasting software at a cost not to exceed four thousand six hundred and sixty-one dollars and thirty cents and recognize fifty percent of that will be reimbursed back to us.
You know what the general timeframe is usually for reimbursement?
I would assume sometime in the next six months, but it would be before the end of the fiscal year.
Mike, is that a one-time reimbursement? Is it one-time cost for that, or yearly cost?
It's an annual subscription service, so we'd have to decide annually if we wanted to keep it. However, from what was explained to me by Unitrix is this is going to be something that they think the state's going to continue to reimburse for some time, and if we find that we don't like it and want to get rid of it, we can. That's the best part about this, but I, you know, from where I sit, this is a tool I think that will help us.
So moved then. I'll support.
Discussion on it, yeah. Sue.
Councilmember Salzweedl.
Yes.
Councilmember Phillips.
Yes.
Councilmember Chambers.
Yes.
Councilmember Canfield.
Yes.
Mayor DeBoer.
Yes.
Item C, water asset management.
Good evening. We have Brian Bilmon here from Prydon Newhoff to talk about the water asset management plan, and Brian, you might take this over and do some education first, or?
Can do. No problem. Okay. Thank you very much. I'm Brian Bilmon from Prydon Newhoff, working as the city engineer for some of the infrastructure work, and we also coordinate with Williamsville Works as well, who provides engineering services for the city also. So as part of all that effort of doing work for the city, for those council members who have been here before, I apologize for having to reiterate some SAW discussion, but for those new council members, a brief moment of some past history. Back in two thousand and thirteen, the state of Michigan started a grant program called the SAW program. It's for stormwater and wastewater asset management. It's a new program that was really funded from way back in two thousand and two, Clean Michigan Clean Waters Bond Initiative that the state voters voted into being, and so the monies for the SAW program became available, and the state, the DEQ, created this program called SAW. And really what it was is for a grant for municipalities to be able to create an asset management program, which lets you, in essence, inventory your stormwater wastewater systems, both the pipes and wastewater plant and the manholes, do condition assessments on all those things, and then look at them from a life cycle management perspective, meaning not just what's the worst things that are in worst condition now and fixed now, but what's the best way to invest from a life cycle perspective. And that also then lets you coordinate work on stormwater and wastewater with things like roads and water projects and things like that. So Lowell received their grant actually last year. We were round four for the city of the grant awards. The DEQ did two awards in two thousand and thirteen, another one in fourteen, another one in fifteen, excuse me, yes, that's correct, thirteen, fourteen, fifteen, sixteen, again, Lowell was sixteen. There was one more round actually that they're getting theirs now, the fifth round. The SAW program is a three-year program, so Lowell will have two more years to complete the SAW. I think we'll be a little bit ahead of that schedule yet. So as I mentioned with SAW, what it does is it helps you do condition assessment and inventory of the system. What happened when the state began that whole program, there was a lot of asset management talk that went through all the departments of the state, and so pretty soon we started seeing asset management plan requirements in the wastewater permits. It's actually now part of the city of Lowell's wastewater permit for the wastewater plant. So it's a requirement to have an asset management plan for that work. So the SAW actually helps pay for that, and just as a note, the SAW is a ninety percent grant for the city. So for all the money that's being spent, really the city has to bring ten cents on the dollar to that program, and you get a lot of value out of it. So for those that, we've been through that before. If any of the council members would like, I don't want to belabor the point tonight, but if you have any questions about that, I'd be happy to sit down with you and go and inform you to tell us on that. But the reason I wanted to bring that up is because that spawned, again, a lot of other asset management talk and one of the other departments in the DEQ that took it up with the Water Division. And so now we have a new requirement for asset management on the water system side. It's not quite as intense as the wastewater side, and unfortunately is not funded. So what we've done is we've been working with the DEQ over the last year and a half as they've been trying to develop the water asset management plan requirements to try to make sure we keep it as reasonable as possible. And if you look at the budgets that are in for the SAW program compared to what's in for the water asset management, you can see luckily we've been able to have some, a bit of success with the DEQ in keeping these requirements of an unfunded mandate right now relatively low, but it still provides some good value for the cities. And so the water asset management plan will use again that water inventory, try to project out some life cycle costs for all the facilities, for pipes, all the hydrants, everything, the water plant, all those pieces that are part of the water system, and project out life cycle expenditures and planned expenditures for the life of those facilities. The other nice part about the timing of this is that even though we can do what we're calling an asset management light version to meet the DEQ requirements, because we're also in the middle of the SAW program, the capital planning for future water improvements will be rolled in with the SAW capital planning. So when we're done with the SAW in a, you know, a couple of years here, let's say, we'll have a very comprehensive capital plan for the city, which will be very succinct for the next ten years and plan out water, sewer, and street projects altogether in a way that helps maximize the use so we aren't tearing up a street and then coming back and doing utility three or five years later. But it also lets us then plan those projects so that fund balances can be stable as well and rates can be stable. So it provides a nice comprehensive mix, but we're trying to keep it as economical as possible for this, for the water system for now.
Does the shut-off stop where you start, your study will stop at the shut-off at the street for the residential, or does it go all the way into? go all the way into homeowners home?
No, currently, I think the city manages everything up to the right-of-way line. So it'll go up to, basically, yes, to that shut-off point. Correct. And not go beyond that. There are different cities, just as a point, some cities take things all the way into the home and go to the meter, but currently the city doesn't do that. And to let you know too, part of asset management where we do condition assessment on things is very different for storm sewers and sanitary sewers because we can see up those pipes, we can look at them. You can't do that for water. So water, really, a lot of its condition assessment is based on our historical knowledge of how different materials perform, and based on the age of that main and also break histories that BPW maintains. So it's just like the plumbing in your house. You know, oftentimes we don't know whether it's going to break until it actually breaks, but we track those things. And if we have an asset that has a high consequence of failure, because that's part of asset management, determining which ones have the highest consequence, sometimes we'll replace those before we actually get failures. The analogy that we've used with SAW, talking about these things that have high consequence of failure, it's like the difference between a part on your car and a part on a plane. If you're in your car and a part breaks, it's no fun, but you can get out and walk if you have to. If a part breaks on a plane, you're kind of out of luck for a little while and not a nice place to be. So that's why you replace those things before they break. And that's how we look at the system as well.
Brian, what was the life expectancy of those older elements that they used for those pipes? Was it 50?
Yeah, a lot of pipes, well, the original ones were wood. Yeah. Actually, a couple of years ago.
Are they out there still?
There are some out there still. Actually, a couple of years ago, I was on a project, they dug one up in Ionia. Now it wasn't in use anymore, but the main was still there. And those, you know, oddly enough, those lasted a lot longer than people thought. Cast iron was the next preferred material. And we've seen mains, bigger mains have lasted 80 to 100 years sometimes. But again, you're living on borrowed time with those. A lot of it depends on the conditions that they're in, free-staw conditions, what kind of soils they're in, those things. So there is a variable, quite a variable amount in the city. As things have been replaced, ductile iron has been the next bigger thing, and it's lined in the middle, so it has a lot less, or a lot more resistance, I should say, to internal corrosion. We see a lot of that in cast iron mains that are unlined on the inside, so they get a lot of rust growing on the inside, which restricts them on the inside plus creates discoloration in the water. That's a lot of, so ductile is the new material that a lot of municipalities are going with. You see things like PVC oftentimes as well, but not so much on the municipal side. And it's not because it's not a viable material for transmitting water. It does work very well, but some municipalities have found it's not quite as durable. And pipes in public right-of-way tend to be subject to a little more abuse because there's so many other entities digging out there. Utility companies dig, residents dig, things happen, and ductile just tends to take a little more abuse. So right now the city is really focusing on more ductile iron mains for new stuff.
Yeah, thank you.
Thanks, Brian. So like as Brian mentioned, the SAW, the water asset and the Pacer, all were leading up to in terms of infrastructure that we're going to be presenting some other time to you, but all these plans work together very nicely to help us plan out our road replacement projects and to make sure that we're not putting new roads over bad infrastructure. So this is a necessary step in the long-range infrastructure planning. So before you then, tonight, there's a proposal from Prine Newhoff to prepare the water asset management plan, and they propose not to exceed a amount of $9,670. And I recommend that the city council approve that and authorize the city manager to execute any contracts that may come out of this. Does that count towards our 10% contribution that we have on this 90% grant? This is water, not SAW and the sewer thing.
Might want to make sure that we have a motion reflect that the city manager doesn't sign the documents, that the either the clerk or the mayor, I don't have the authority to sign.
Well, with those changes, I'll make the motion. I'll second.
Councilmember Phillips.
Yes.
Councilmember Chambers.
Yes.
Councilmember Canfield.
Yes.
Mayor DeBoer.
Yes.
Councilmember Salzweil.
Yes.
Thank you, Brian. One quick notice and update for SAW to let you know, we have done pretty much all the inventory for things and the condition assessments. We've stuck pole cameras down all the manholes and looked up all the pipes. As part of that, there are some of those that had blockages and things where we couldn't see it, the pipe due to the condition assessment. Those are now mapped, actually we're working with Rich with that to, it's about 25% of the sewers that we will not follow up with and have plumbers lined up to do full cleaning and inline televising in December. So if you see plumbers' trucks running around in the sewers and popping a lot of manhole lids, don't freak out thinking that things are falling apart. It's just doing a very thorough condition assessment on things, so hopefully that should wrap up by four Christmas time. Thank you.
And we'll try to get some notice on Facebook to let people know that that's happening also. They were on my road today, and I saw them on there, so good job.
All right. Item six, monthly reports, discussions. Consider. Your turn, Mr. Burns. So you have your report. Will you go?
Oh, we go first. Yeah. Board and commission report. Great.
The Lowell Area Recreational Authority met on November 8th. The work is proceeding on Alden Ash north of Michigan Wire, and the wall is going in, the storm drains. They got pushed back a little bit, and the asphalt is being held up till next year. We just ran out of time to get that done. The trust fund for the Phase Two connection to the Flat River Valley Trail, the trust fund board went to Lansing again and put in some more information. Those awards come out December 6th to find out if they get more money to help with that. And there were a couple of questions about trails, snow plowing, and I forwarded that to Mike Burns, and we're working on some ordinances about maintenance of the trails. That covers the larger meeting.
Mr. James.
Planning Commission, we're working on the Airbnb stuff still. We'll have, what, chapters 17 and 23?
Chapter 22.
Thank you, Bruce. 22, I should have just asked Bruce. For council, okay, in January. Mike Burns was the guest speaker at Lowell Light and Power. Mike brought bad news. Due to our insurance, we can no longer have bucket rides with the Lowell Light Power truck. This was the last year of it. You can do it, but the riders like, what, $7,000, Mike?
One-day policy.
For a one-day policy, so I think they're pretty much done with, so that's all I got.
Jeffery?
The Historic District Commission's next meeting is November 28th, 6 o'clock downstairs.
I'm currently not on any boards, but I know that subject will be changing.
I can help you with that, for sure. Okay, I had first the Arbor Board meeting. Rich brought a few 15 or 20 items for us. Looking at some tree removals behind the school admin building, there's a couple of real nice light fixtures. You can't see them anymore, really. Like, we decided three on each side and to trim the ones in the middle.
We'll talk.
Yep. And then cleanup and perhaps a nice lattice fence around the mechanical over at the library. We talked about how we keep up the standards to maintain our Tree City USA designation. Talked about tree removals at Hudson and Hunt, 618 Riverside, 403 North Washington, up at the wastewater plant, and at Veterans Park. No December meeting. January meeting is still to be determined. Then I went to the fire authority meeting. They're going to spend under $49,000 was the low bid for their new tender. It's going to provide them an opportunity to take water in non-hydrant areas without having to call another department. I have payment schedules for all you guys. Ron emailed me tonight. So they applied for an LCTV grant, and then where they're going to sell one of the old engines to a brokerage firm. So they'll be able to cover most of that. In three to four weeks, they'll have a new brush truck for wildfires and grass fires. And their next meeting, Monday, December 11th, 3:30, at the fire station and LCTV Thursday, December 6th downstairs, right? 7:00 PM downstairs. That's all. Now it's your turn.
Mr. Yankovic brought up the issue with crosswalks, and obviously I was on the news a couple of weeks ago regarding that, and I know I addressed some of the issues here last week, so I'm not going to belabor what happened. However, it sounds like that news article raised some ire over at MDOT. They are going to be willing to meet with myself, probably in the next, in the near future. So myself, police chief, and public works director are going to be meeting with them at some point to discuss some of the issues with the crosswalks. Our annual audit presentation will take place at our next meeting. Rita Veldhoven-Hoffner will be here to make that presentation. The state legislature is looking at possibly within, starting next Monday, and they have about nine days left of the legislative session, to possibly consider possible pension and retiree healthcare reform for municipalities. Several months back, the governor put together a task force of many different entities, including elected officials, pension boards, unions from both public safety 312 binding units, arbitration units, and non-binding units, city managers, a whole number of issues, and they came up with a number of agreed-upon recommendations to possibly address a lot of our pension reform and retiree healthcare issues for communities. And they were looking at possibly taking that information and utilizing that in the proposed legislation that they're going to have. There's rumors out there right now that those recommendations may not be considered. We don't know. I will be meeting with Representative Albert later in the week to kind of get his opinion on that, as he's been very active in that, trying to get some better understanding as to what they're intending to do. Last week, last Thursday, police department in conjunction with the United States Secret Service held a counterfeit seminar for not only city staff and light and power staff, but also for many of the local business merchants. Unfortunately, I couldn't attend, but there were a lot of people who did, and it sounds like the information they received was very, was very good, and it was a very well-attended event. Then some changes to the date when Lou Better is going to come. I know we had him on the Tuesday, I believe, January 24th. We're going to be, or Wednesday, January 24th, we're going to be moving that date to Friday, January 26th, that evening. Lou's schedule couldn't, he's going to be in town, working with a number of different entities, and the 26th worked better for him coming here. Christmas in Lowell was this weekend, and from what I understand, it was very well-attended and was good for the community. I was glad to see that that went well. I want to wish everyone a happy Thanksgiving. Just a reminder, we will be closed Thursday and Friday at City Hall. And also, just so we're aware, we're going to be closed, obviously, on Christmas Day, but also the day after, in observance for Christmas Eve and Christmas Day in December. And one last thing, just to ask the council, we did this last year, we can do this again if we want to, or if we don't. But if we don't have any agenda items for the second meeting in December, does the council want to meet? We didn't do it last year, and if you want to, we can, but if you don't, we don't have to. I'm just throwing that out there to the council. And that's all I have.
I don't, I think last year we had two extra agenda items on the first December meeting so that we could close out without that second meeting and be comfortable doing that again. Consensus there? All right, well, we'll go that route then. We're through appointments. Chamber of Commerce, Jim, right now is the only. Because Hoxton was on it. He was on my list, right? Well, then we have none, except the one planning commission vacancy still. No applications yet, Sue?
Yeah.
Maybe you give one more ledger, publish notice.
We have three openings on there.
We fill, but one, and then.
Amanda.
Amanda, great. Yep. Yep, and then we still have Commissioner Gerard's spot, and then you're going to stay as the council. Oh, and your spot, which isn't on my list, yeah, so we do have two. And then we also have your light and power spot then, too, correct?
That is correct, yes.
Okay, so maybe I'll have Steve put a public notice as well for that light and power spot for applications for that. Then I received a letter today from Mr. Sprindro. He is going to resign effective immediately from the DDA board. He was talking to Rick Sees from Green Ridge, and Rick has written a letter of intent to replace him, so he found his own replacement. There's no objections. I'll reach out to Rick tomorrow and have him fill out an official board commission application. Good with that? Okay. Counselor Johnson, great.
Nothing.
Marty?
Christmas in Lowell. It was good to see this town that busy and customer come into my store and understand why they called it Christmas in Lowell. He says, because you can't drive through the town, there's too many people. It was wonderful to see the people coming out in the rain. They didn't care, they were having fun, everybody had a good time. It was a good save, it was good seeing, I don't even know which officer it was down there, finally directing industries back and forth, but I think that's something that on those big things, we need to do more on our side of town as well as over here. Other than that, that's it.
Cool. Jeffrey?
I'd like to thank all staff, departments, and heads for their hard work. Everybody have a, you know, happy Thanksgiving, be safe. And yes, it was crowded downtown, it was amazing. I got out and, you know, I saw you all putting the lights on your store and the garland and all that, and Greg, your stores, they look great. It just looks nice to come through the community. And then as I was reading through our packet, I see the fire department, the fire chief, maybe you can help me on this, I see they take donations to give a family in the community a Christmas. And that really struck me. I'd either like to, for us as a council, to put some money out there and either help out or join in with them. I'd like to give some donations to help our community and give some people some Christmas, otherwise they may not have or what, but I would like to do that. However we want to do that, I could either just donate there, or we'd like to do it as a group, and maybe we could challenge all other departments and get a, because I know you guys do some great things over there, chief. You know, maybe we can challenge Lowell Light and Power City Hall, you know, and just get back to our community and people, and let them know, you know, we're thinking about them and care. So I challenge you guys to do that, I'd like to do that. Other than that, have a great Thanksgiving, and that's all I got.
Mr. Salzweil.
I want to thank everybody that voted for me and got out and supported me during the election to put me here. I will not let you down. I did have a good meeting with Rich to understand a little bit about the sewer, Pacer, and water, and all the hard work that he has to do to put this in front of us. I know that I've always been outspoken that we need to do things bigger, better, and sooner. After meeting with Rich, I understand that that is going to take a little bit of time, so I'm going to be patient with him as he gives that information. I also had an opportunity to sit down with Mike, talk about also what it looks like from a financial standpoint to pay for all that. And he's got a huge monumental task in front of him as well that is also going to take some time. So I'm going to have some patience for both of them. I look forward to hearing what they have to offer back to the citizens and us as the council. And thank you.
Thank you. I'd like to thank everybody who voted for me as well, especially whoever voted last. Think you back off what Marty was saying, I think it's impressive.